Ready. Okay.
What? Yeah. Future day. So we. Special budget council meeting. All of order. You won't call Pete warning.
Present.
For doctor here. The lodge.
Present.
Mike Netley. Present. Little guarantee here for it about.
Present.
And we got deputy Kelly couple.
Yep.
But believe it.
Well, let's just see the lighting of the United States of America. And to the revolving for which is hands. One nation under God into this hole with liberty and justice.
No, then fire committee meeting and we got some information on that, I guess, for our budget.
Yeah. Kind of right on line item to everything and make some adjustments. I don't know if you were able to read this document with great little updates on.
These all have updates, yes.
Well, there was some increase in capital on that one, was it?
Yeah, we bumped out up to seventy thousand knowing there's going to be a couple of expenditures coming up. One would be the turnout gear. Correct me if I'm wrong. And but. And then the other one was starting to build. A bigger reserve for maybe the purchase of a new fire truck down the road. And that may be coming up sooner or later, right?
Yeah, I had mentioned with Terry, it's like we can't. There's no guarantee that we're going to get a grant. And I said, maybe we need to start budgeting something toward turnout here. And if you looked at it, if we had to pay it all, it would be twenty five thousand a year for the ten year turnover on.
So crazy thing was that the fire department, they couldn't even answer why they have to replace their fire gear other than. Yes, and he says it has a life of this long, they're saying it's really fine.
Well, that's what Terry.
Said I'd have no problem with wearing it into another fire.
Yeah, Terry said his first gear he had for twenty five years and never changed it. And then all of a sudden it was constant. And he said, we donate our turnout gear somewhere. And then Billy get to keep using it. It's a it's a weird deal. And they don't want to donate it anywhere because of the potential liability that would attach for being updated.
Yeah, that's goofy goofy deal.
My takeaway was there's some board out there that oversees equipment and turnout gear for the whole country. And it's a mandate that's just been thrown down everybody's throat. Maybe you can answer to that.
No, that's that's what it is. It's federal to the state. Yeah. Exactly. OSHA or I care remember which one it is, but yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I understand the principle of it. If you're in a city where you're in burning buildings all the time or something, but for our guys like Terry said. They might in the ten years, they might spend ten hours inside an actual building, maybe two or three guys and rest from outside, but. One of them do.
One thing that was said also was we're talking about writing for grants and they were going to network with there's. He named four different cities where there's grant writers, but the last one he used was on Alexandria. So it's on it was on these three guys achieving the two assistants that they're going to cultivate that side of it. So we're kind of off the hook, right?
Yes, and that's why I just wanted to be really clear about it. And from what I understand, I think it's due in November, December is when it's supposed to be submitted. And then they find out early spring if it was accepted or not.
This replacing the gear, if I could. Is there a place where we can appeal? With reason like what you just, you know, that gave great reason and even supported reason. Here are the fires we've had over the last how many years? This is not much instead of just it seems like these unfunded, yeah, unlimited mandates. You know, they hit everybody, right? Because we got to come up with it and just comply with the laws. But like, where are the lawmakers and those that are mandating these being held accountable? And I know that's now oblivious, you know, that's a big question not to be answered more rhetorical, but like. Is there any sort of an avenue or some sort of a platform where we can before we just say, okay, sure, fine? You know, we sign it and buy it and whatever, just to explore an option of an appeal and say, here's our case, you know, we. That we have to because of X, Y, Z. I don't know, just a question.
In order to, you know, waiver.
Yeah, yeah, appeal the mandate and ask for lenience or whatever.
Well, there's a big ticket item. State, there must be a state fire board, I would think, to the state fair marshals. Wonder if they have some kind of a. Fire board.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not looking to put our guys in danger. I'm not saying I don't want to spend money at the expense of their safety of having quality equipment. But per your comment. The testimony is such where it's like, hey, this stuff is great. There's nothing wrong with it and we're going to have to toss it and buy new stuff. It's hard to justify that.
Well, look at Wolf Lake with that smoke. How are they going to come up to our fifty thousand? Carsonville, that's the one up in pause that Carsonville concert.
Yeah.
It's just a little fire station there.
Rather than Carsonville, they a lot of times when they have it, I guess we haven't looked to see what kind of grants are out there for this year, but it's usually run for FEMA and. The state.
Well, that's what we got last time.
Yeah.
Be on. I mean, if they do.
Yeah.
Great, but they don't.
Yeah. Another thing with a lot of these other departments, they have a charitable gaming license. And they run charitable gaming and that money goes into reserves to buy equipment and so forth. So they have the money. I know at Audubon, that's where they got all of their turnout gear from their communications equipment. The good portion of the truck buy down came from charitable gaming.
Yeah.
That they're their own license. And why why Monaga never did that? I don't know.
A lot involved in that, you have to have somebody that.
Well, you just have to have a manager. It's not that difficult.
Somebody else to do it.
Yeah, they get paid.
It's not that difficult to pay you pay somebody.
Gamma manager at the VFW gets draws a salary, doesn't she?
Yeah.
Diane, she runs, is it three of them, manages three of them?
Oh, right. Not a Wadena.
Yeah.
Or?
Yeah.
That was brought up many a few times, but it was many years ago in the Lions to call her. Um, is it, I think it's kind of why the fire department didn't get any, because they didn't want to. Well, take the take it from the lions, so. I don't know, but that was long before I was. Even old enough to know it.
Well, in today's today's world, their challenge would be finding a location to have the terrible gaming act, which would be at Bar Tavern.
Yeah.
And they're pretty much all taken.
In my question in regards to all of this, once again, just to make it clear is just to make sure we've. Looked at all of our, you know, tried every rolled over every rock is what I'm getting at, just to be accountable to the city, right? That's what we do here. We have to manage the ins and outs and. And and so whatever that may look like. Not to delay the process, that's not, I'm not trying to put a roadblock up. I'm saying like, hey, what would it look like if? And I also know too, rule of thumb and doesn't always work, but sometimes. They say whoever they are, a squeaky wheel gets the grease, right? So you just keep. You know, keep squeaking and it might get to you.
You could reach out to our representative or Senator rep. I just.
I mean, they. They were bad.
Yeah. It might. Yeah. It might behoove you to maybe just send them a quick last, you know, we're looking at this big expense coming up and why? There's no. Funding to take care of this mandate.
Do you recall the name of the entity that mandates it?
He did an acronym, I don't, I don't.
I don't. Do you recall?
Uh, yeah, Minnesota Department of Public Safety. Uh, and while there is no general waiver for mandatory turnout gear retirement, there's a process for requesting temporary waivers for health and safety deficiencies, which. That's not the case. Uh. So the state fire marshal may grant waivers to extend certain exemptions, such as those related to specific use beyond January one, twenty twenty six. Fire departments can apply for these waivers and must provide a plan for meeting the requirements.
Well, that's out of the one is our we call the first of January, I mean, is it doing January twenty six or have we good through twenty six?
I don't. Anytime I think it's anytime in twenty six. I don't think there's an actual, just they give a ten year lifespan.
So long as them guys get on that and get grant writing. Contacts and get something started and if there's grants out there, which there should be, if there's mandates, usually there's. Grants that go along with them somewhere, but.
Source was name came up and I don't know if we as a city after we talked to source wall or is it department has to retouch source wall.
We do the department. They're.
I don't know.
I think in this case it would be the department specifically, like how they did for their extraction, their jaws of life. Each department can request individually from source well.
And they might just kick it to FEMA or something too. I don't know what source will house, but they would have some idea, at least I would think, because they deal with a lot of cities. So they probably have some insight on it too.
They usually the grant writers, if they deal with the feet with FEMA, they or if they grant right, they know where to look for the grounds and.
Well, on top of that, I wonder if turnout gear is under would fall under the source will buying program.
You know, it's just the trucks, I think, isn't it?
Yeah, I have to ask source law.
I know we can get it on their the equipment side.
Equipment and computers and things of that nature, I know, but I don't know if.
Don't know, don't know till you ask. What they want to put aside for the fire truck or was it just?
I think that seventy thousand was encapsulated everything, right?
Yes, we went up from fifty to seventy.
Then number, I didn't negotiate the last contract, you were part of that, right, Jody?
Actually.
But prior to that, I think I mentioned at our committee meeting was that the townships are receptive to making sure we have a fully equipped department. So to get pushback on turnout gear would be kind of remarkable if they say, no, we're not going to support that. Especially when you your first line of defense is your turnout gear. Right?
Yeah. To be honest, the ten thousand cheap insurance for, you know, new guy or new, you know, new equipment, so.
So when that contract is negotiated for next year, we're gonna say, what, why is it seventy thousand now? And we'd have a good, a good reason why.
Well, and as I did mention, the bread, I mean, we do share that. So the the whole deal isn't on us, what do we do fifty six percent is ours, I think, or fifty four percent, forty six?
Yes.
And that burden should be shared by all the taxpayers in township around the city of Monaga, I think.
Well. We've all done. All that stuff and more. Anything else on fire? No, protector. Well, I'll give you my first look at preliminary, Brett's got the number on the board up there. Forty two thousand, ten dollars is how much we are over. From last year.
Uh, well, so it kind of. It's not necessarily last year, it's versus our revenues that we're expected to have. This year.
What was the shortfall for twenty? Five.
Uh, for twenty five, it was approximately thirty thousand and that's what the council voted for the life.
For the assessment. That's it. I mean, it's based on the thirty thousand.
Yeah, that 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 was the straw that caught two point one four increase.
I know my goal is to zero increase. Those what the economy is talking ten to fifteen percent. I put in a call to commissioner, they haven't received response yet. And I'm going to highly encourage that they start. Making some cuts or something down there, this this county cannot afford another ten to fifteen percent tax. They just up their property values, which brings them more money and now that was this year. Now for next year, they're talking another ten fifteen percent. And I know the states giving them grief and they have unfunded mandates, but. I would highly encourage that everybody talk us to your commissioner and says, hey. Time to get out the sharper pencil and. Figure something out because we have, we have so many elderly in this town that are living on that fixed income now.
Well, even small business, I mean, we run a small business and. You can look up our tax burden, just go online and see how much money we're paying. We actually had the assessor a couple of times trying to little things down and make sure the footage is right and their field cars are accurate. There's a lot of discrepancies sometimes.
It's never. It's always to their advantage. Discrepancies are fine if, you know, and then we meet in the middle, but.
All we want is to be treated fairly, just for everybody.
Of course, it should, it should be right, the data should be right.
So I guess what we really need to get to. That number is one thing, but where does it put us levy wise as far as increase goes? If we have to increase.
Ah, yeah, I didn't actually get that percentage, but I crunch it right now.
So that's that'd be the big. The big thing is how do we get that or can we get that to zero without hurting anything?
I, I, yeah, I definitely think so. I mean, and again, uh, in the revenues, um, you know, because Greenwood's facing a pretty, pretty stout.
Reduction.
Reduction, right? Um, you know, we only charged them so that that. If we can just go to the revenue page, please, I'll, I'll start here with you. So where are we? Uh. Nursing home in lieu of taxes, thirty four, one oh four. So that constitutes the pilot, so payment in lieu of taxes and. That's, that's the number that we took last year. Uh, or we budgeted for this year and. You know, we could. And we're allowed as the city to take up to and I, and I. I know this was last year's conversation with Laura, but I think the number was a hundred and twenty eight thousand is what we could ask from Greenwood. And so we could with one decision right now, make that number go to zero. Uh. However, they still pay ECBN. And that cost is lower this year. Uh, last year, I want to say it was, uh, ten thousand a month, this year it's, uh. Eighty five hundred, is that right?
Eighty three, twenty six.
Eighty three, twenty six, so.
Because of the reduction in beds?
Uh, I don't have the specific answer. Uh, Laura still pays us the eleven total. And then that just goes into the, um, payment in lieu of taxes as well.
So yeah, so for a total, I mean, we've got transfer from nursing home at one twenty and then we've got fifty five pilot.
Yes.
So it's a hundred and seventy five thousand.
And yes, and again, we, I cut that one ninety two down. Uh, you'll see it the next one transferred from nursing home, I brought that down to a hundred and twenty thousand.
And you did that because?
Because they're.
Because of reduction.
Yes.
Revenue.
Yes, that's right.
Must equal the total beds, right? Is it always equal to that?
We'll be true. We used to, I think they decommissioned through the years like about twenty, maybe.
Yeah, it was like, I, we had ninety one beds, it was sixty five, I think it was.
Yeah.
It's twenty six.
Yeah, it's just over the course of year, years.
And, you know, there's, there's like a place right here, if you go down to four M dividends, interest thirty six, two fifteen. I mean, last year the city brought in twenty thousand dollars and wasn't even budgeted last year. This year we budgeted that twelve thousand for twenty five, right now we're at three thousand. I still expect that to go up. I mean, we could always increase that revenue as a likely source. As well, which would.
Or you could could increase it, but how realistic is the increase?
Um, I think.
Well, that that becomes question, it's got to be a realistic base, based on. On verifiable assumptions.
I, I mean, I am verifiably, uh, certain that we will get at least twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand, yeah, but you said we can bump it up, but well, to do so, what's the verifiable? Basis to justify the the bump.
The the verifiable basis is that we haven't taken any of that funding out and we have, uh, contributed to. Uh, our, our investments, so there's no reason to suggest that that number is going to go down. And if it does, uh, it would only be probably one or two thousand.
They're going down, but you had said bumping it up and that. Yeah, and I'm saying what's the verifiable assumptions that would allow you to say, okay, yeah, we can reasonably bump it up to this.
I, I think we could reasonably bump it up because we still have those same investments in there.
And broadly in twenty thousand, five hundred dollars in last.
Correct.
And we do have two or three yet this year that matured. So you're going to grow that interest from all of those. When we put them back, when we invest them back.
The dollars in there.
But you get the interest out when you transfer.
Well, we're not accruing, we're on a cash basis, is that correct?
For some of it.
For for earnings, yes, we're on a cash basis, not accrue.
That, no, I think it is cash.
But I would still, I would rather not. Over project our revenues. I agree, it's always safer to. Be safe on the revenue side of things.
Yeah, there's going to be a surprise, I like it to be a good.
A good surprise, yes. Yeah, above that, we've got interest earnings at eight thousand, what is that from the? Yeah, one oh one thirty six, two hundred interest earnings.
It's last. Oh, yeah, that's. They came a little under.
Was really good.
Uh. Last year about in. We've got eight thousand projected.
Can you pull that? Thanks, Kelly. Yeah, so that actually should probably come down.
Twenty four, we budgeted six, it was only eleven hundred and seventy eight. For this year, budgeted eight and it's only nine forty four and we're a third of the way through the year.
Look back in time here, see why that might have gone off. Okay, so in twenty five, uh, they pulled in five thousand, they did twenty three, excuse me, yeah.
But I think at twenty three was when we started converting from bank to the forum fund.
Yeah, I think so.
So that would account for that number up there.
Yeah, I would say to be safe, there we almost have to take that down to three thousand, if we're at just under a thousand now.
I give you twenty four and twenty five.
Okay. Okay, this, yeah, it's community first, okay?
We probably should back that eight thousand down to three thousand. Yes. We're at nine forty four now, let me know.
Well, the question is. Are we going to be leaving those funds at, uh, community first or will they be going to the forum fund?
Well, I mean, typically we leave a pretty big cash balance in there. Uh, yeah, I think the lowest we've seen is maybe ninety thousand, uh, we even try to keep at least over a hundred thousand in there. At any given point, um, anytime that we get paid by the county or the state, it goes to that bank account first before we transfer it anywhere.
Goes there first, yeah, but my question, my question was, will we be leaving the money? In there or will it be going to forum?
It goes to forum.
So therefore, you know. Is that, is that thousand dollars for a third of the year or three thousand dollars for a year realistic or is that going to be high?
Hmm.
Is my question.
If we go to three thousand, we should be close considering we're under on the four and.
Uh, yeah, no, I think. I think, I think that's very safe.
We've got to keep a decent balance here, you've got to know, pay our bills without having to wait. So we're gonna wait for money to come from forum or someplace, mature from somewhere.
Change the eight to three, it's the five thousand. Yes.
I thought that forum fund was fairly liquid.
It is liquid, it's.
Yeah.
So the four M, the four M plus fund is a bit more illiquid, but it's still a very liquid fund. It's like, it's like a forty five day window. You have to keep it in four M plus before you can pull it out. Four M, you can put it in today and take it out tomorrow.
So if they're paying two or three percent higher than our local bank.
That's where we want to be.
Is that where we're at right now?
That's why, yes, uh, interest rates have come down a little bit. I think the latest one was what, four point eight, four point eight five?
Well, the one that we ended up getting was four point three.
What?
But I think that's what it ended up being, otherwise before that it was three nine.
Geez.
So it had went back up. And she said it was just that time of year where. Interest rates had dropped.
Oh, okay.
So is that a, is that a money market that money sitting in or what is it sitting on?
That one was going into a CD, so, yeah. But we, we just put it in for. Nine months.
Was it nine? Yeah, I think, I think so.
And hoping that it'll go back up. If two more that we have to do this month.
Yeah, well, and one of the things we can do too is we can ask the bank to match funds, actually, we've been doing that stuff and they've been agreeable to it. So we need to make sure they're still.
I know they treat Greenwood very well.
I know Laura does that, because she'll check before she does anything and ask them and if they'll match it, she'll leave it there.
And if they've done, you know, she needs to.
If you get it on the forum or whatever, but I think every time she's done that, they've matched.
Well, Laura has a basic resistance to moving out of community first bank.
Well, and anything we can keep local, I mean, we like to be local, if they'll match it, I'd rather have it local.
Yeah, I think it matches, but I think it's on us to do our due diligence. To give the taxpayer every bang for their buck.
Make sure that it's being managed here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'll double check when it comes time to. Transfer them and reinvest, then I'll find out what the best deals are through them. And then talk to the bank and see if they will match what we would get anyways.
Do you and Brett negotiate with the bank or who who negotiates with the bank?
We didn't have to yet.
Yeah, no, we haven't had to negotiate with the bank and, um, and what do it?
You were.
Oh, yeah, me, I would for sure. Yeah. Like I got a number in my head and, you know, if another competitor is going to beat it, well, they they're either going to match it or. We'll take our business elsewhere.
Well, we have to, I mean, we have to have our checking account somewhere. Got True Star, we've got here, but anything if we can transfer.